Good morning, everyone. This is the Delaware County Commissioner meeting. It's Monday, February 3rd, twenty-five times nine to the most old rise from the twenty minutes. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Ed, can you call the roll, please? Yes. Gregan. Brand. Here. Henry. Here. Mr. Brand. Here. All right, we're gonna begin with the announcements, the Employee of the Month that Mr. Brand has come up with this program. So, yeah. Thank you, President Henry. So, we have an Employee of the Month. I talked about this in our January sixth meeting. I have yielded my privilege parking space and created an Employee of the Month program. I sincerely appreciate the help of Commissioner Kyle Johnson and Sarah Hodges and James Carmichael, who is our county assessor, is here to present the first Employee of the Month.
Thank you. This is Candy Abbott, she's our Employee of the Month. We've had the privilege of working with her closely, and I'm gonna read what was submitted by our Chief Deputy. She won't read this, so... You wanna read it? No, okay. Having the privilege to work closely with Candy for the past years, we can confidently say she has exceptional work ethic and positive attitude. Candy consistently demonstrates a level of professionalism and dedication that sets her apart from her peers. She not only is highly skilled, has a Level Two certified DNA assessor, praise her. She also has thirty-two years of exemplary service with the county. What truly stands out about Candy is her ability to work seamlessly with others. She is a valuable team player, really officer sports colleagues. Her positive attitude helps to create a motivating and collaborative work environment. Whether it's assisting others with challenges, tasks, or leading by example during high-pressure situations, Candy remains a constant source of encouragement for those around her. Additionally, she handles customer interactions with empathy, patience, and professionalism. Candy has consistently received positive feedback from both the public and fellow employees. Also, Candy demonstrates successful communication skills and dedication to customer satisfaction and conclusion. We wholeheartedly recommend Candy Abbott for Employee of the Month. So, Candy's right outside this domain here is exhausting. She has three children, all of them degrees are successful, and her social life, exhausting. Bowling league, youth club, golf league, pickleball, bingo, concerts, sporting events, not to mention travel. With all that, I give you the Candy Employee of the Month, Candy Abbott. Certificate. And like I said, like Mr. Brand said, parking for a month. Candy, with that personal life, how do you have time to be the Employee of the Month? Just to make it all work. Well, thank you for everything you do for the county, and thank you for recommending and nominating. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. All right, next, we'll move to appointments. We have an appointment for Yorktown Public Library. We received a letter from Yorktown requesting Patricia Freeman be reappointed to that role. And then, because of the continues, she's got an outstanding job up there. A second time. I have motion to appoint Ms. Freeman in a second, will call please. Mr. Regan. Yes. Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. Okay, next, we have the BCA Board. We did an appointment last meeting, and we kind of missed a very important part of the rules on that procedure, Mr. Brand. Sure. So, in a January twenty-first meeting, we had two nominees, Mr. Davis Paul, who lives in Yorktown, and Mr. Audie Barber, who lives in the city of Muncie. And looking at the BCA rules, in order to be appointed by the county, you have to live in an unincorporated territory of the county. So, if the county has one-hundred-and-eleven thousand people, and you take out all the incorporated territories, that leaves you with about twenty-seven thousand people that we're trying to draw a Democrat from. So, we still don't have a Democrat nominee. So, if anybody's watching, or anybody that's your president knows someone who's willing to serve on the BCA, we need a Democrat who lives in an unincorporated territory of the county. You cannot live in the county of Albany, Gaston, Eden, Daleville, Soma, so on and so forth. You have to live in the county. So, right now, that spot will remain open, and it needs to stay on the table, I believe. Commissioner, for a matter of record, since you've only appointed him, I think that you'll need to have a motion to rescind that appointment, so we can have a clean record of it. I agree, and I made the motion to appoint Audie Barber, who was nominated. I'll make the motion to rescind that appointment. Yes. Rule call, please. Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Regan. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. Thank you. All right. The ECIR PD Board. So, at our January twenty-first meeting, I believe, no, actually, it's January sixth meeting, Commissioner Henry self-appointed. Do you have somebody you'd like to appoint?
Kailene.
Kailene Spocky, ma'am?
Yes, she...
Well, yes, sure. Great. Thank you for that, Kailene. I know she's here somewhere. And I would like to appoint Tracy Lutton. She's the Vice President of Economic Development for the Muncie Delaware County Economic Development Alliance. And in talking with Bill Walters, who runs ECIR PD, I asked him what kind of skill set he was looking for. And after taking that into consideration, I had three candidates, and vetted it down to Tracy. So, I would make a motion to approve both Kailene Spocky and Tracy Lutton. Is there ever a formal motion to put this on the table, or is it just table because we didn't have an appointment? At least, table because we didn't have an appointment, and it will have to come off the table. Okay. I couldn't remember if it was actually table, but if it's a table, then I would have to hold it there. It's not on the table, it's just on the appointment. I didn't know. Yeah, we have a motion for Tracy, and a motion for Kailene. Got a second? Are there two appointments? All right. Yes. Are there two positions I have? According to Bill Walters, there are... Oh, I'm missing that. Michelle Badger, this is your true... Yeah, Michelle's saying yes. Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second rule call, please. Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Regan. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. All right, next is the Metropolitan Plan Commission appointment. Teresa Hensley currently serves and needs reappointed to that position. Is requesting to be reappointed to that position. For Tracy. So, we make a motion to appoint Teresa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rule call, please. Mr. Regan. Yes. Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. All right, next, we have table business. We wanna leave the handbook revision still on the table. That's still an ongoing in committee. You wanna talk about the solar moratorium?
Sure.
So, we need to make a motion to take it off the table to discuss it. I would, yeah, make a motion to take solar work on the table. Second. Have a motion to take the more time off the table in a second. Rule call, please. Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Regan. Yes. Mr. Henry. So, I'll provide a quick update. I started, I think, in the January sixth meeting and in the January twenty-first meeting, providing updates on the activity here. I've attended probably thirty-plus meetings with different PD groups, people that are pro, people that are against, people that are neutral. I've also visited other counties, Huntington County and Whibley County, Johnson County and others. You know, it's clear that even the solar companies, National Red Renewables and others, are asking for amendments to the ordinance to be considered. There's new information coming out. So, you'll hear an ordinance that's proposed here later on in the agenda, ordinance number five for two thousand twenty-five. You know, things like battery energy storage systems need considered in an ordinance as one example. I also would like to make the public aware, it's been posted, I think this was in the newspaper, there's a public meeting with the IURC on March eleventh. If you'll allow me, I'll just read it real quick. Good. It's a legal notice of evidentiary hearing, Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, cause number four-six-one-seven-seven, in the matter of petition by Ward and Solar LLC for certain determinations by the commission with respect to its jurisdiction of the petitioner's activities as a generator of electric power. Notice is hereby given that the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission will conduct a public evidentiary hearing in the above-captured cause in room two-two-four of the PNC Center, one-zero-one West Washington Street, Indianapolis, Indiana, commencing at one PM on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. This hearing is open to the public. So, I wanna get that on the record, it's coming too. So, also, I was contacted by David Clifford, I believe he is the developer for InVenergy, asked to talk to me. I intend to return his call today. So, that's all the updates that I have at this time on solar. I don't know if the other commissioners have any. So, I wanna go ahead, just for the record, I'm not gonna read the entire ordinance, but I want to read the important facts in this ordinance, so everyone is aware. Moratorium that was to expire on March first, two thousand twenty-five shall continue in place until such time as the county has completed additional amendments to zoning ordinance regarding solar energy for the acceptance, review, filing of any application by any person from or entity seeking to place or install solar farm on any property in Delaware County. Nothing in this moratorium shall prohibit any person, fund, or entity to conduct discussions, negotiations, meetings, or provide information about solar, any proposed project, or information about said projects to any person, elected official, or organization. Three, said moratorium shall remain in effect until such time zoning ordinance is amended and adopted by the board of commissioners, or until such time as the moratorium is repealed by the act of the commissioners in the event that zoning ordinance regarding solar energy is not amended. That's what's stated in the ordinance. Everyone, go ahead. I'm okay if you guys want to introduce it. Okay, Sherry's gonna make a motion to introduce ordinance, so ordinance twenty-two-five-zero-five. A second. Have a motion and a second rule call, please. Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Regan. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. That's for introduction. Thank you. All right, moving on, we have the approval minutes of the Commissioner meeting, January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and also the executive session minutes, January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. A second. Mr. Regan. Yes. Mr. Brand. Yes. Henry. Yes. Next, we have presentations to commissioners for new extension.
Morning. Justin Gurley for New Extension Office. I just wanted to come up here this morning and invite the commissioners, as well as the public. Great, they invited the public. To our annual meeting, which will be on twentieth, your invitation's in here. I also have our impact report here, which details the work that we're doing, not just in Delaware County, but throughout the state of Indiana. I know that some of you are very familiar with extension, but some of you are not so much. So, I wanted to give this to you all, so that you have it.
Thank you. You might say, you know, location and time. Yeah. If you go right ahead, just move right in. Just from the records.
Annual meeting will be on February twentieth at the Academy for Model Aeronautics. We will have dinner at six-thirty. If you intend to attend, we ask that you please RSVP to the office, because it is a catered meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is this open to the public? It is. It's open to the public, just need to RSVP to the office. We do have a downed attendance due to funding.
Can we make donations as we donate?
Pardon me?
Can we make a donation to you?
Um, there was no intention for donations, but if donations came in, I believe we have a way to process those, yeah.
Good idea.
All right. Appreciate it.
Next, we have the diversity blood drive, Mike Williams. And Pam McCammon.
Pam McCammon, Human Resource Director. Mike came in my office the other day and was explaining this program to me, and it's really a good program. And I'm gonna let him... Uh, we won't be sitting on that. But I would tell you guys something funny. I didn't know he was a twin. For all the years that I've worked in HR, I thought I was fucking... Let's say, one person in a half a twin. And that was for thirty-two years. Yeah. Anyway, I'm gonna turn this one to Mike. And it is Mike. So, yeah.
Sorry, I've been getting confused for fifty-six years and nine months. Yeah. Just under the wing to get the nine-month part. Good morning, Captain Michael Williams, training officer Delaware County EMS. We've had a great opportunity present itself to us. I really think that we should go forward on. Perceedy is the parent company that runs the Indiana Blood Bank. Since COVID, the blood donation has hit rock bottom, as you can well imagine. Unfortunately, the need is still there. Back in two thousand seventeen was the last time that they came around. They had been doing blood drives with Albany EMS. And since then, we've acquired all the EMS, start covering the territory. So, she reached out to us, see if she can get that started back up. It's, uh, there is no financial gain to the individuals that are donating blood. The only benefit is getting back to the county. Unfortunately, you know, being in EMS, we start thinking about the emergencies that come up with blood loss, such as your major traffic accidents, industrial accidents, violence that takes place. But unfortunately, if anybody in this room has ever had surgery before, you're out of position where you might need to receive blood. According to the representative I talked to, by week two of this year, we were already in critical need in the state of Indiana for old blood. So, this is gonna be an opportunity for us to come in. All that's required of us, they want about an eight-to-twelve-week notice to set up, so they can make sure they can get their end set up, make sure they have the personnel and the equipment all set for it. They want it so you can do four-block, or four-hour block sessions, where they can come in for four hours, take a show-up an hour prior to, they set everything up, they do the donations, and then they clean everything up and leave. They will take and put out flyers with a little QR code on it, so you can just take a picture of it. You can schedule to go in to a blood donation. They also do walk-ins as well, because not everybody, they'll sign up for a slot, and then they don't show up. So, they do walk-ins as well. They have a fleet of eleven buses, I believe she told me, where they can just pull a bus up and run the donations through there. Or we can set up a spot, like out of Med fifty-five, we have our training room up everywhere. We can actually set up a full blood donation center and have people come in and donate the blood. The only thing that is adding cost to the county is we have to do a PR blitz to get the word out there. I'd be more than willing to act as liaison from the county to Perceedy Company. I've already talked to her. And this can be set up anywhere, County Highway Department, the county building here, Justice Center, EMS stations. This is just something that I am passionate about. I've got family members that actually work in the blood bank, and I can't tell you how many times we've had the conversation of shortage on blood. So, that is what I'm here asking for, is your blessing to go forward and talk to them about getting blood drive set up.
Well, I commend you. Actually, I used to give to the Indiana Blood Bank, but I haven't seen them around for some time. I've once been across. Delta just had one a couple weeks ago, so I can't... For state, please, but it's a great idea, but parking is... Yeah. Anything.
I think it's a good idea, and I think we have room at nine-one-one, we can set them down at nine-one-one. Or, yeah, EMS station one, we can put them out, station three, from Yorktown, from Albany. I think we have plenty of locations for it, as far as cost for PR. I don't, we already have a Kyle Johnson, who can access any social media page and put information on. So, I don't think there's a big cost there. I would...
She would like to do this quarterly, too, by the way.
I think it's great. I think it's great. I'd entertain a motion for approval. So, second. So, move in second. There you go. All right, we have a motion and a second to... I made a motion. She made a motion, I already have a second. Rule call, please. Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Regan. Yes. Mr. Henry. Thanks for working on that. Oh, appreciate it. It takes like hours and these... All right, we pick. Whatever hours we wanna set it, I just... Our voices, whenever we wanna do it. And I will coordinate with Pam, and I'll reach out to Perceedy and get that set up. And then, Kim Kyle Johnson. Thank God. Yes. Thank you, Captain Williams. All right. Next, we have, I don't know, my phone started calling the reception service. She picked you up somehow. She did. Um, probably because Mike was here. That's right. Fred, make sure that didn't call nine-one-one, would you please? Would you make sure that didn't call in, because I only have one second. His phone. My phone tried to call nine-one-one for some reason. Um... Technology. Uh, yeah. All right, next for contracts and agreements for approval, we have bid openings. I believe these are for the materials, for the highway departments. It is, correct.
And rotating projects, okay.
I've got, um, I've separated them out. I've got some with materials, some with rotating, and I've got one that doesn't identify, and the other's all looking out there. Who's the father, Joe? Right over there. Start with that first, yeah. Uh, this is, um, the road paving, so... Highwayman Civil Contractors out of Whitestown, Indiana. This is for a rotating project. Like their bid is... How many different ones, correct?
There's three roads. They should have a total for each road, and then a grand total for every road.
Walnut Street between twenty-eight and ten road eight hundred north. They've got a bid of three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Three-eight-four, comma, three-nine-seven, point two-five. Next one is ten road six-fifty south, between ten road five-fifty, five-forty east, and ten road four-nineteen east. That bid is for two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and fifty cents. Two-two-six, comma, six-two-five, point five-zero. Third one is ten road six-fifty east, between State Road thirty-two and Centennial Avenue. That project is, cost is one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. One-six-five, comma, ninety-seven, seven-point-two-five. Their grand total of seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars, Eva. Seven-seven-seven, comma, zero-zero-zero. Next, Dig West Paving out of Middlesbrough, Indiana. First one, Walnut Street between State Road twenty-eight and ten road eight hundred north. Three-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and thirty cents. Three-three-one, comma, two-four-seven, point three-zero. Next is ten road six-fifty south, between ten road five-forty east and ten road four-nineteen east. Two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Two-two-four, comma, zero-eight-seven, point five-zero. Third one is ten road six-fifty east, between State Road thirty-two and Centennial Avenue. That fold is one-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, comma, one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. One-five-two, comma, one-three-four, point eight-nine. Their total package of seven-hundred-and-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. Seven-zero-seven, comma, four-six-nine, point six-nine. Next, I have First Bricks Construction out of Fort Wayne, Indiana. All right, first one, Walnut Street between State Road twenty-eight and ten road eight hundred north. That fold is three-hundred-and-four thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy dollars and twenty cents. Three-zero-four, comma, two-seventy, point two-zero. Next is ten road six-fifty south, between ten road five-forty east and ten road four-nineteen east. That fold is one-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-seven dollars and fifty cents. One-eight-three, comma, four-zero, seven-point-five-zero. Third one is ten road six-fifty east, between State Road thirty-two and Centennial Avenue. That one is, okay, one-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and thirty cents. One-three-one, comma, nine-five-six, point three-zero. Grand total of six-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. Six-one-nine, comma, six-four-two. Four-zero-zero. Next, I have B and B Paving out of Delville, Indiana. All right, Walnut Street between State Road twenty-eight and ten road eight hundred north. Two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty dollars and eleven cents. Two-six-nine, comma, nine-three-zero, point one-one. Ten road six-fifty south, between ten road five-forty east and ten road four-nineteen east. One-hundred-and-ninety thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and ten cents. One-nine-zero, comma, nine-seven-two, point one-zero. Third one, ten road six-fifty east, between State Road thirty-two and Centennial Avenue. One-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents. Their total of one-two-eight, comma, two-eight-seven, point three-zero. Grand total of five-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. Five-eight-nine, comma, one-eight-nine, point five-one. That's all I have for the project. I make a motion, or I would entertain a motion to take those under advisement and let Angie and Tommy take them down. A second. Have a motion to take under advisement, a second rule call, please. Mr. Regan. Yes. Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. Next, I have the materials. Is Milestone Contact to seven, Mr. Ben, Indiana? I think it'd be appropriate, John, if you just read us the company names that have given proposals. We'll have Angie go back, like we have in the past, and do a spreadsheet and present that at the next meeting, and we can make it available to the public as well. Also, only is providing a bid as to asphalt mixes. Next one, I have First Bricks out of Fort Wayne, Indiana. It says, really doing asphalt mixes as well. And that's what it looks like, just asphalt mixes. Next, I have ILLI. ILLI's project is going for sand and gravel, although there's, um... Also asphalt, can gravel asphalt. Next, we have AgBest. Twenty-two, Indiana. It's pretty sure yes, and it looks like it's only two of the gas and diesel. You can't do anything. That's all I have for you. Yes. And, um, B and B Paving. There's asphalt mixes. Uh, asphalt, uh, mixes. Seems to be doing, I have asphalt mixes.
That's the last one?
That was the last one, yes.
I think for accountability, we should let the dealers only come up and look at those. On Angie taking them.
After the meeting.
After the meeting. Because all of this, all of the minutes, you take all those under advisement, but I think let the... Let the dealers come up and look first, before they go away.
I'm okay with that. And like I said, Angie to provide a spreadsheet with all the information on it, by the, uh, the next meeting. Actually, I think I am ice, or at least I do. If they come up and grab the package, we're gonna have a ball, and we'll continue with the meeting. Keep them late. All right. Have a motion to take my advisement? A second. Motion, a second rule call, please. Mr. Regan. Yes. Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. Thank you. Next, we have twenty-five, generator contract, Minister Paul, yes, Mr. Paul, sir.
Morning, Commissioner Steve Foster, Building Superintendent. That's just the yearly, um, contract for all three buildings, the nine-one-one, Justice Center, in here, with ATS switches and the generators. So, they haven't changed nothing, and in the three years that I've been here, I think he even noted that. So, it just needs to be, we just need to prove that we can get that done. And then, I will have you guys some information on the grinding pump and stuff out there at the Justice Center, on a contract, and some more repairs that need to be done to that out there. Other than that, what I've got.
Three thousand nine-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars, that was the same last year.
No, they've picked up their prices flat, I believe, the last three years. And however, next year will go out for bids, and, you know, they may still be the best. And then, I'd like to put a long-term contract in place, which would be required by the commissioners for any kind of a long-term contract. But I would make a motion to approve these, because those are presented by Mr. Foster.
This is with WW Williams, and Sherry has already saved the price of three thousand nine-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. Have a motion and a second rule call, please. Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Regan. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. Next, we have the new norm agreement, Mr. Jamie Bane, is he here? I saw him.
Excuse me. Good morning, Commissioner Jamie Bane, the Minister of the Health Department. You guys should have it for you, an agreement within the Health Department and the new norm, faith builders ministry. This is applying some of the Health First Indiana Act to assist with emergency sheltering of the homeless population. As, uh, as legal review this, I have, I mean, it's just that with...
And it's just that with the other agreements that Jamie has done with uh, with all the other partners, we made some changes early on, and he's incorporated all those, so this is consistent with all those. Thank you, I'd like to thank Commissioner Henry for keeping this moving and justice. Jamie and I discuss various ways to try to help the homeless population, especially with cold weather, um and, and we, we uh, we spent lengthy time on the phone talking back and forth and, and um going over different ways. We could possibly help, and, and this is what uh, uh, I thought came up there, so thanks for looking on, yes, appreciate that. I think if the only one is twenty-four seven, I believe so, I think some of the others have done twenty-four seven, but new norm is consistent with that, as needed. Thank you. Make a motion to approve the contracts presented. Second. Do you have a motion to approve this agreement in a second will call please? Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, next we have a consent for assignment, Angie?
Good morning Commissioners, um we currently have an agreement with Triad Engineering Services, um Triad Association, I apologize. We have recently merged with VS Engineering, so they're asking that our on-call contracts, uh that we uh provide written consent for the assignment with VS Engineering. But they are, our engineers that use all the kind of Triad will continue working on our projects for the future.
So this states is for general engineering services, can you be more specific so people understand what kind of engineering services we're purchasing?
Majority of the on-call are, one, if there's an emergency, two, a lot of drainage applications, are, are viewed by Triad Association. Those are the two main reasons.
Be an example of an emergency situation.
In so long, those had a user that, that was related to drainage, um. That's in my memory here. Three two on the west side of. Well, we currently have, I've not been under contact with the engineers, uh, because I, we have, we were already under contact, but I mean, we got noticed that we were going to be closed, like from our, that's from our, um, United Consulting, we got our bridge inspection. But they've been here, been here before. They have, uh, set a law, they require at a minimum to inspect bridges, that span twenty feet or more every two years, right? But I was thinking, they've been there a year before, and then all of a sudden, you found out that we had to close it right away. It was on a two-year schedule. I don't have any other issues.
Oh, there was a hole with the roll to the deck, I, I.
That's what I'm saying. Got away with it, and Cyc Club United, for that one, because they had, they had done the inspection on that, thank you.
You're welcome. Can we call this out to other engineering services?
That we've been using in the first several years, and just in my mind, um, for now. Usually you don't go based on pricing, it's based on um the qualification, the capacity, that type of thing.
No, I understand that, and I would say that a lot of you are, and I'm not advocating for anybody specifically, but they all are qualified well to take care of these stormy issues, and they do have in Exhibit A a fee schedule, so I do think that costs are, are relevant. Do you know how much we spent, they spend a year with BS, which is now going to be Triad Association?
Last year we spent around eight thousand, we've never gone to the.
Fifty, don't you?
Yeah. But I can give you those figures.
Thank you. Uh, any more questions?
I definitely accept.
So, second. A motion to approve this agreement, the second will call please. Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Next we have a local roads and bridges matching grant agreement.
This is uh the standard boilerplate, plate contract provided by Indot for our most recent award back in the fall, um. And this agreement um allows up to a match of five hundred twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and thirteen cents. This um agreement is for the three roads that um was listed off during the bid opening. Thank you, I just need your approval.
I don't have any questions to make to comment, there's a House bill moving through legislation right now, I think it's House Bill fourteen sixty-one, that states if your county does not have a wheel tax, which we do, that you're not going to be eligible for the community crossings grants going forward, so. Because the counties that aren't participating don't, and that means more money for them. I'd make a motion to approve. Second. A motion to approve the local roads and bridges matching grant agreement, in a second will call please. Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
And next. Next we have a bridge number one twelve, uh right-of-way acquisition.
Um, I, I have two parcels that um have accepted our original offers. First one is parcel one, which is Michael A. and Ruth C. Heenke. I need approval for their purchase, as well as parcel two, which is Connor Family Farm. They are an LLC, so on top of approving the purchase, I also need um a signed waiver of reservation that I've provided to you.
And this bridge is located?
Six hundred south at Williams Creek in Fairland Township, east of Honey Creek Road, Honey Creek and Fairland West.
For either of those entities here.
How did I know that?
Make a motion to approve. Second, we would need to issue a waiver of credit. Second.
We had a couple of things for Shannon and Simon.
Shannon. You're um making a motion to accept those, those agreements, that's ours, okay. I have a motion to approve both in a second will call please. Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yeah.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. As uh many people know, we've been having issues with um the audio here in the meeting room. Uh, we have a quote for uh three thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars that Mr. Slusher has been working on. Um, I, I know he's had a couple of different companies come in, and this company's um. It was a quote, I, I think it's a fair quote, I would add a tan lotion and forward with this, and yeah, I, I like this option, uh, this will be a wired option, so we're gonna have wires everywhere like we do today, so hopefully we can, you know, avoid a trip hazard, but the other option is several tens of thousands of dollars for wireless. And, you know, with all the other issues we have with wifi, I didn't feel like we should support that, but this is important, for what I said in the twenty-first meeting about using AI to listen to meetings and create, create notes, if you've ever watched one of these meetings online, it's very broken and you can't hear it, well, a human can't hear it, neither can the AI tool, and we're not going to be able to implement those AI tools unless we get this corrected, so this is our, our first shot to get it, attempt, uh, attempt to get it corrected. I'd make a motion to uh accept and approve uh in point created proposal. Second. Will call please. Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Next we have an agreement with uh My Heart. Mr. Kirk. Now this agreement is essentially uh one of the requirements uh required by the state to perform as part of the gap um report we do annually. So this is just, just a portion of that, that they're uh gap performing, including. So they audit us for general accounting practices. They, they do a portion of it, this is the portion of certain, I think it's in that, in that, in that, lines, yeah, things like payroll and interest, that kind of things. Have we done this with them in the past?
Yes.
Really, okay. They're like an outside of Chicago. Nobody locally can do this work.
These are very specialized areas.
Of public accounting related. Public accounting. Any other questions?
Uh, eight hundred dollars.
Do you have a motion for a figure? It's a pleasure.
I'll accept this, and maybe we can find somebody.
I'll second it, and I'll work with all the, to see if we can find somebody locally for next year that can follow an audit gap for public accounting. We have a motion and a second will call please. Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yeah.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Alright, next uh we have ordinances, ordinance for first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three, creating a new fund for grant-funded Delaware County Adult Drug Court.
Hello. Good morning, Jane Miranda, Community Corrections. Uh, this is similar to what I was here for a couple of weeks ago, except for these are existing grant funds that are already in an account that is uh audited by the Department of Corrections. This particular grant is Indiana Office of Court Services, so we are just wishing to separate the two entities to make reporting a little easier.
Just the auditor support this. You're okay with that?
Okay.
Yeah, they put out all the information we need to set up the, the grant fund. But it's currently in a fund, so you're okay separating it out, because for that purpose, right? Make a motion to uh approve ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero three. Exactly, this will be, yeah, this will be, yeah, this will be, do you need, you need it done now, or can we wait till next meeting?
No, we can wait, it's, they're already in funds.
Okay, alright, so we have a motion introduced, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three, in a second will call please. Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Next we have uh an introduction, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero four, creating a new fund for grant-funded Delaware County Veterans Treatment Court.
This is the same thing that you gave. And I thought we already had.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Motion to introduce in a second will call please. Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five is already been introduced, we want to um department heads and elected officials, um we have Tommy Humbert here. Um, Tommy, can you tell us briefly about the project?
Yeah, sure. Tommy Humbert, Delaware County Highway Department. Uh, I guess it's not any paying us any questions, um, so we've been working on a project on seven seventy-five south, Old Road at the intersection. Actually, the first phase started at Kernwood Drive, which is a horseshoe right off of State Road three. We removed probably twenty trees out of that area so the semi drivers could see to get back out on three. So that was the first phase, um, second phase, we actually went in right at the intersection, lawn right has, he owns that property. We took all the trees out, uh, to find trees, the fence rose out, we cleaned everything out of there, I'm in the process with Comcast, AT&T, to have boxes moved back. The whole plan here is to widen this corner. I've talked to several farmers, and, and pretty much everything is happening pretty much right off of the turn. It's where they're coming off Old Road and turning onto seven seventy-five side. What they're doing is they're swinging out to miss all the stuff, which we are going to set back, but the traffic coming on to the, to the east is having to get over, there's no burn there. So, any questions about that stuff there for anyone?
Uh, AT&T, you need to work with.
Uh, AT&T was good, I'm having a little problem getting hold of Comcast, but I'm still trying to get hold of Comcast, but AT&T is gonna work with me on this, they told me what they needed me to do, so I've already, can start with that.
Go take your call between five AM and ten PM, Tuesday through Thursday.
Okay, uh, hey, I'll try that. Um, so, so what I want to do is, I'm gonna widen that out, actually, on the north side, we're gonna, lawn gives permission to get up into the driveway cart a little bit, little bit, we're gonna straighten that curve out, you can see on the map there, it's kind of a rough rolling, but it kind of shows how we're gonna. How we're gonna kind of angle it out and angle it in. The good thing about this road is, everybody is complaining about it being too narrow, and that's what the problem is, it is narrow, okay? But, I live on County Road seven hundred south, thirty-five and three. I pass with my horse trailer, semis, pass there, no problems. The problem, and, and it's the same, it's the same lip, I mean, there's no difference, if anything, seven seventy-five in some areas is three to five, five inches wider. The problem is the curve, and I don't wanna say it's speed, because they're not speeding, but it is speed, it's, it's an unsafe turn when they're swinging. So. I'm, I'm the next part of this, this plan, so, let me, let me get off subject here. So, what I'm gonna do on the south side is, I'm gonna work on the burn there, I'm gonna put some at the intersection, and we'll try to widen it a little bit more on the south side also. So that, that's gonna be all open, everybody can see everywhere, can see everyone, all four corners. There is a culvert, it'd be the first one to the east, or the first one to the east. I think I'm gonna go ahead and pull this out, and put a longer culvert in, I'm probably gonna go forty-six feet. Um, when I put that in, I'm gonna come with rep rap at an angle back to, to create here the burn right there, that's one area that I, I'm not really good with the burn. So it's gonna be quite a bit on both sides. Anybody have any, and I think this is gonna be okay, I think this will work, I think this will work, I think this is gonna cause all, cause all the head-ons to end. There's only like three wrecks, all those wrecks are right there in that stretch from that culvert to the intersection, and it was semis that are actually heading back to the east.
Your layout shows stop signs eventually?
Yeah, so here's what I wanna do, and I really hope you guys take this into consideration, this is gonna help tremendously, I've talked to a lot of farmers, the farmer's coming from the south and getting on seven seventy-five to continue straight on seven seventy-five, they have a stop sign, okay? They cannot see back to the, to the south on Old Road, you cannot see until you're almost, it's almost like Russian roulette to pull out there, um. If we put a four-way stop in there, that's gonna take care of that, everybody's gonna see everybody at the four-way stop, and it's going to not allow any semis, like I'm saying, I'm not saying speeding, but to take reckless turns. You know, and I think, I think it's gonna, it's gonna make the road a lot easier for it to be traveled, the, the person that causes trouble is the people coming off of Old Road and heading, heading at, at a speed. I feel like if we can control that, I think it will control a lot there.
I think what you said, a semi coming from Highway three, which would be heading west on seven seventy-five.
Correct.
They come up to that stop sign, and then a loaded semi at eighty thousand pounds trying to cross in a reasonable amount of time before somebody coming from the south, is that like forty-five miles an hour, if you're there?
Yes, it is forty-five.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, and I actually have talked, I have talked to a lot of farmers out in that area, and that is, that's actually as big a problem as anything right there. Their number one complaint was the trees, about, everybody I talked to, the biggest complaint was that Kernwood was the trees, because they could not see, looking back to the north, they could not see to get out of State Road three, but I really believe if we put that in there, I think it's, it's needed. It's gonna make everybody be at the same speed turning, everybody at the same speed trying to get stopped, I, I think it's the smartest thing to do right there.
Yeah, I appreciate the update, only two comments, uh, to be shared this with the sheriff, because we're talking about that and stop signs, I'd like to hear that feedback, and then Keystone and O'Neal to give the feedback, and then.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I sent one to Tony and to Jeff.
So let's study that, is it a, will it be a four-way stop?
Well, that's what I want, like that, and like I said, it's not really so much as, as, because the minimum's forty-five, I mean, we can't ticket anyone, you know, I can't say, hey, Tony, can you go out there and see if you guys can, they're, they're not speeding, they're not going forty-five around the curve, but they're taking it at twenty, you, you can't do that, you know?
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other department heads or elected officials? Hey, we have uh payment claims of one million eight hundred fifteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. I'd like to make a couple of comments, I think we went backwards a little bit on adding descriptions into our claims, and when these are posted online, it's difficult for somebody online to understand what these claims are for, so I'm asking again, anybody entering a claim in VIP, you're required to put in a description, it doesn't have to be super detailed, two or three words to help people understand. What we have the privilege of is looking at the county council's budget book, and we can cross-reference the account numbers back to the book, somebody watching, you know, the public watching this, can't tell what it is, so. Uh, I've also talked to the auditor, he's agreed to put on VIP training, and I'll be working with Sarah and Ed to try to get some training set up, and make sure that people understand uh what the requirement is, but, you know, if we don't get these claims a little more detailed, I'm gonna ask that they be separated out, like, you know, we have one large claim here for a million eight fifteen, seven seventy-seven, that's made up of max ten or eleven claims. I'm gonna ask that they be separated out, and then the department start putting detail in, I'm not gonna approve them.
But, so there'll be two places, one for some detail and one for the invoice?
So when you look at this, invoice number, right, invoice line, they've put uh, uh, the, or they found their invoice line description, they put the invoice number. That's all they put, so we don't know what the invoice is for.
I think it's on the check stub. I was like, okay, I think there's two places.
We don't see the check. We don't see the check.
No, but, that's what, I'm going back to when I was down there, we only had space, but maybe you have more space now, but it was important to get the invoice.
Some, some are, some are, some are good, some are, yeah, the descriptions are good, like here's a real good one, it's a, it's a, it's a line, there's a, there's a line number, uh, and it says who it's to, it says Spanish and pepper, that's fantastic, we know what it's for. Right, but here's one with an invoice number, so here's a claim for quite a bit of money, and the description says four two one eight seven six five zero seven six.
That's because up in Chicago, the lady's putting her check stub in and, the check in and.
That's the invoice number. So when somebody provides a service to the county, they submit an invoice to the county, somebody on our end receives it and approves the invoice, and they sit and enter in VIP our system. When they're entering VIP, they're entering this invoice number, a Delaware County employee is entering this invoice number, and all I'm asking is, oh, Spanish and pepper, you put the invoice number too, that's what the auditor wants, I think that's fantastic, okay, but all I'm asking for is a couple of words of, of description.
Space, so neat.
And then a couple of quick things, the, the snow that we had and the ice and, and things that, we spent about sixty-eight thousand dollars on sand and salt, so our county highway crews went out and did a lot of work, so there's a price to have them safe roads. Um, we had a Ninskeeper's tax on there of seventy-three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, and that's coming into us to be distributed out to the different uh incorporated payments.
Ninskeeper's tax?
Yes, that's basically, uh, goes to the uh tourism, travel and tourism, that goes to the Horizon Convention, or goes to the CCA, yeah.
They know that.
Wheel tax, a hundred eighty-one thousand, seven seventeen, so we collected a hundred eighty-one thousand, seven seventeen in wheel tax. And then there's a, some, two tax sale things, one was a redemption for about seventy-four thousand, and one was a surplus for almost two hundred and thirty-three thousand, what's the difference between those two? Sales tax, redemption, sales tax, surplus.
Redemption is when, when a individual has their property going tax sale and someone else pays their taxes in, so now they're redeemed, so they keep their property, or that's redemption, so we collected that when they finally paid their taxes.
Actually, one of them, in the tax sale. And then the sales tax surplus, that's the excess funds that are paid up beyond the taxes.
Got you.
So, the taxes were a thousand dollars, and they did three thousand dollars, there's an excess of two. Okay, bring that back, I think, thanks, that helps me, and I think it helps the public too, and then uh, is Steve Foster still here, did he take off? Thank you, Perry. Okay, I'll follow up with Steve, in the detail of the claims, there's a bill here from the Muncie Sanitary District, I believe it's for the Justice Center for eleven thousand, seven hundred five dollars and nine cents. I don't believe we really used that much water, so the sanitary bill, there's not a meter on your sanitary sewer, it's based on the water bill, and the assumption is everything that goes through the water meter goes down the drain and processes at the Muncie Sanitary District Waste Pollution Control Facility, but I believe this was water used during the construction. And we can get credit for that, so it didn't necessarily go through the sewer to be treated, so.
He, he was working with, that's why the district asked him what, what that thing was.
Yeah, somewhere proven to pay it today.
Yeah.
Um, now we'll get a credit if we get it fixed.
There was, there was a different one, there was forty-seven thousand.
Yeah, and this is another one, yeah, so, I'd second the motion to approve the claims after my comments. A motion and a second, pay claims will call please. Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Brand.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Um, we have no ERG claims, and we have payment of payroll for one. Um, we have no ERP claims and we have payment payroll for one twenty-nine or twenty-twenty-five, one million eight four thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Second, I'm listening to pay the payroll in the second, we'll call please. Commissioner Brand? Yes. Reagan? Yes. Commissioner Henry? Yes. All right, next we'll go to public comments.
How about a recess?
Okay. What we're gonna do, we're gonna recess, uh, for ten minutes, um, to give us, to give us a little bit of a break here. So, uh, Sherry made a motion, second recess. We'll, um, come back in at a quarter after, so we're gonna be in recess.
We need to get that.
All right. Listen up, everyone. We'll get started here again with, uh, public comment. So first is, uh, Dan Berry. Everyone will have three minutes to speak and please forgive me if I, uh, mispronounce your name. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Dan Berry and I live at twenty-nine oh-one East County Route eight hundred north in Eaton. And I'd like to talk in favor of the solar. I've been a farmer here in Delaware County for my whole life. And I believe that the utility solar is coming in, a big, a big help for property taxes here in the county. That is the main thing I think will really help the county. Uh, we are in a good proximity for transmission and substations around our area, so that's a definite plus. And, uh, if solar is a steady supply of income for the county via the property taxes. So I think when the ordinance, the moratorium goes off, since we already have an ordinance, I think it's time to let the solar developers come in and start on their projects. Thank you for your time. Thank you, thank you. Next is Drew Cleveland.
Good morning. I'm regional manager for Indiana Farm Bureau and I've been asked by some members to come and speak, uh, on this moratorium. Uh, I live in Randolph County, so I'm very familiar with wind and solar. We've had it for quite some time. Uh, I cover Blackford, Jay, uh, Delaware, Randolph, Wells and Adams counties. And it looks like Blackford is in line to also get some projects. Um, as far as our organization, I wanted to speak, we have a policy process where we get input from our members from all ninety counties and then they get together on the state level and vote. And so we have a policy book. I'm not gonna bore you with reading it, but basically we, we favor local control, but we also favor landowners' rights. And so I guess I would speak that it doesn't seem like a wise choice to have a moratorium. Um, have your ordinance set, have your setbacks developed on the local level and then allow the landowners to make their own decisions. It's a good option for a farmer, um, or a landowner to diversify. They can put all their land in it, they can, a part of it, they can make that decision on their own and what's best for their operation and for their family. Um, I've done some research and Indiana is a net importer of energy now. Used to be a net exporter. So we are definitely in line for needing more energy development in Indiana. Um, and also, I guess lastly, I would just speak that living in Randolph County, uh, I've seen it firsthand. Um, EDP is a company over there, the developer and operator. They actually share income with neighboring landowners. So it's not just the landowner has the infrastructure, the neighboring landowners also get a portion of the payment because they have to deal with what they're living next to. And, uh, it's been good. Local government has benefited from that. And then lastly, I'm sure you're aware, but on the state level, there's legislation that would bypass the locals, that would bypass you. And I'm worried that, you know, this moratorium is one reason for that. And so I'd hate to see the, the locals bypassed. So I think it would just be wise to stay away from moratoriums, make a decision, get your ordinance in line and move forward. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next is, uh, Christian Hartzell.
My name's Christian Hartzell. I live in Albany on five-four-nine West First Street. Um, and I'm here with Renewables Ready Delaware County. And I'm here to speak in favor of solar energy and using solar energy to preserve our county's rich agricultural heritage. Since two thousand one, one thousand one hundred acres of unincorporated land have been developed for residential use. Solar is a viable way for farmers to supplement their farm income and promotes farmland recuperation. The agricultural economy fluctuates depending on weather, but green energy can diversify income sources. In fact, many local farmers already support using solar energy and farming the sun. These technologies are considered a modern form of farming that allows farmers to rest their lands, preserve their topsoil and harvest the sun with minimal impact on the environment and abundant benefits to our community. Please don't delay the process that is already completed. Delaware County should be open for business and we should let companies submit their proposals and their permits. I ask that you trust the process will play out. This is the right thing for Delaware County. So I ask that you keep the ordinance as written and trust the process. Thank you for your time and your service. Thank you, thank you.
Doug Marshall?
Hello, uh, my name is Doug Marshall and I live on seventeen-three-three-zero North County Road, uh, two hundred west. Um, just to put simply, I just wanna thank you, the commissioners, uh, for putting and, uh, the first reading, um, uh, the mora, uh, moratorium. And we just asked that, um, we just thank you for you wrestling with, with this topic and just thank you, thank you for your work. Thank you.
Charles Lancaster?
Good morning. My name's Charles Lancaster. I live at eleven-five-oh-one North County Route one hundred west, Muncie, four-seven-three-zero-three. I live on a farm in Hamilton Township and I'm enrolled in the solar project. Alice, my spouse, and I bought this farm in nineteen sixty-nine at great financial risk for both of us. We moved into a house that was built in eighteen ninety-eight and I don't think it has had any improvement since that time. Along with our four children. It was a difficult financial hardship for us at that time. The most luxurious item on this farm was a swimming pool. It was three foot by six foot. I'm sure it improved my children's immune system. We managed our farm out until nineteen seventy-eight, when we were able to scrape enough equipment together to farm it on our own. From this point, we were subjected to varying weather conditions, good crops and poor crops, decent grain prices and low grain prices, and lo and behold, government interference. In nineteen eighty, President Carter embargoed grain to the Soviet Union and I got a dollar of bushel out of my corn. Now, if you approve this project and don't regulate it to where it's not profitable to the farmer and the investor, I have an opportunity to stabilize and supplement my income. Further, it would be a big financial boost to Delaware County. It's my understanding that the county would receive a substantial amount of tax over twenty years and you would have a thirty-five thousand dollar contribution fee for a charitable fund. I'm sure Delta High School would love to have some of that. Through the years, you've denied windmills. We can, you can drive right out thirty-five and you've, not very far and you can see all the windmills you wanna see. The prison was denied. You can ride out three north of Newcastle and you'll see the prison. There's an unsightly property, a brown field at the old Turgelay and Delco plant on H Street and, uh, Sampson. Solar ha, my understanding, solar has been denied there. And it would have to look a lot better than, than what the scrubby. Your, your time is up, sir. Okay, thank you. Sorry. Thanks, thank you.
Next is Holly Hanauer.
Good morning Commissioners, I am Holly Hanauer, forty-seven hundred West Woodway in Muncie. And today I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Muncie Delaware County. The League of Women Voters of Muncie Delaware County call on you to allow the moratorium on utility solar in Delaware County to expire on schedule and the current solar ordinance to go into effect. Do not impose another moratorium. Delaware County needs to be open for business. The current moratorium seems to have been employed simply as a tool to stop renewable energy development. And the new ordinance introduced today does not specify an end date. By definition, a mo- a moratorium must have an end date, and so this ordinance is flawed from the outset. Public awareness of the demands for energy, for reducing fossil fuel-based energy and for the financial benefits of utility-scale solar projects has increased dramatically. Farmers in counties around us have been able to diversify and stabilize their income and the counties themselves have benefited from infrastructure improvements and an expanded tax base. We could all benefit from a more reliable power grid. It's time to take seriously the proposals from utility solar companies interested in locating in Delaware County. If you're considering amending the current solar ordinance, that can and should be done without imposing another moratorium. Battery storage need not be a part of the solar ordinance, though it could be developed as a separate ordinance. For the companies waiting to submit their proposals, battery storage is not a part of the projects that they want to build here. It's time to end the moratorium to acknowledge that the democratic process works and to put our ordinance into effect. Delaware County needs to be open for business. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Next is Annette Rose.
Good morning. Annette Rose here. I live at eighty-four twenty South County Road five sixty East in Selma, Indiana. I have a nine point six kilowatt solar system which I've had since two thousand and fourteen. Uh, this is reliable electrons. This is uh, an offset of my electricity consumption. And as we all know, we should know, uh, our, uh, we buy from IMA, uh, IMP and uh AEP who nailed and has throughout the history relied heavily upon fossil fuels for the generation of electricity. And those fossil fuels do pose a risk to all of us, including our wildlife. They uh, create a myriad of air pollutants. And uh, of course, those pollutants then are harmful to us who have breathing problems and they're harmful to our water streams and wildlife. And the ash pools that exist throughout our river systems in Indiana, many of which are at risk when we have flooding that occurs and we have this historical burden on us that we should be working on now. But into the future, we need to do something to uh, generate electricity from fu- from sources that do not produce these kinds of risks to our human health and to wildlife and our soils and water quality. I ask you to drop the moratorium and keep the solar ordinance. We've been at this long enough. We need to diversify our electricity production because we need to secure ourselves for reliable sources and solar is reliable. We know what happens over a year. We know how that changes. We need to protect ourselves and enable our tax-paying landowners to benefit from their own decisions regarding whether to lease their lands to solar development. And I ask you to drop the moratorium.
Thank you, thank you. Next is Mike Johnson.
Uh, please let me know when I have thirty seconds left to do it. My name is Mike Johnson. I live at two hundred west, north of twenty-eight. I want to thank the county commissioners in Delaware County for all the work that uh, they've been doing uh, on this uh, moratorium. And uh, I believe, um, I believe in common sense and a place for everything and everything in its place. This is not the place for this. It's just not. Um, for those that are pro-solar, I understand. Um, the lady that just spoke, she has a, a self-sufficient solar unit, or apparatus at her house. Anybody that wants to put them on the roof, fine, put them in the yards, fine. Industrial solar, no, not here. I just don't agree with it. There's plenty of businesses coming to Delaware County. There's plenty of businesses here. We could always use more. So businesses are not gonna stop coming here if we don't put in industrial solar. To me, in my personal opinion, it's nothing but landscape litter. And that's exactly what it is. We got a lot of road paving projects, a lot of improvements. We wanna keep those going. It makes the county look good. That's what's gonna attract people. Industrial solar is not. People will not wanna move around it. And Delta High School is right down from me and I really see the attendance going down there if we put industrial solar in this county. That's all I have to say. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Next is Vicki Gassaway.
Thank you, my name is Vicki Gassaway, I live at twelve sixty South County Road nine hundred west in Delville. I too would like to say thank you, um, to the Commissioners for extending this moratorium. I also would like to say thank you to Mr. uh, Brian for doing your research and visiting other counties. That's kinda what I wanna start off by talking about. Um, we're seeing this happen across the nation and in every single county in Indiana, across our nation. Some of these companies are coming in and promising the role to our landowners. As I've mentioned before, my family was approached almost twenty years ago by a solar company. My family's been in the agricultural, um, realm here in Delaware County since the eighteen hundreds. And so I'm thankful that my family has denied them, um, from coming onto our property. The reality is that many counties that are having to deal from the fallout from these projects. Counties that did not take the proper steps to create an ordinance to protect non-participating landowners. Counties that did not ensure property value guarantees for non-property or for non-participating landowners. Counties where the solar company has filed bankruptcy mid-installation or where the contractors or subcontractors are placing wings onto the solar fields. Counties where landowners are having to deal with erosion and drainage problems. Surrounding neighbors are having to be burdened with noise, electromagnetic fields and glare. And if people want to say that that's not true, that solar companies do not produce those, I wanna bring you to the abatement application that Meadowforge owner and Venergy applied for here in Delaware County. In the abatement application, Meadowforge had to answer a question. States please describe in detail any environmental real or potential impacts, discharges, nuisance contaminants that this project or the production process will generate. And Venergy states, none. The project will include meadow grasses, which will aid in drainage of the nearby area. However, in an obtained land lease agreement with Moon Oak Solar Project, which is a neighboring Madison County but also owner is in Venergy, in their contract with the landowner, says in no event shall the grantee or its related persons be liable to the owner for property damage or personal injuries to the owner or related persons attributable to risk of known and unknown dangers associated with the normal day-to-day operation of electrical generating facilities such as noise, electromagnetic fields and glare, or from any runoff or altered drainage patterns resulting from the grantee's grading of the property. Did you hear that? Known and unknown dangers. However, in their abatement application to Delaware County, there's none. There's no dangers to us whatsoever. These solar companies know that these industrial solar plants are causing these serious issues. This past August, I was able to attend the Smart Choices Land and Energy and Food Conference held by the Agri Institute.
That's three minutes, miss. Thank you, thank you. What is your name? Did you sign in Kathy? Yes, you did, okay. That's fine if you'd like three more minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I attended the Agri Institute Conference. Julie Kemp, she's the State Office of Energy Development, answered questions about solar-ready community certification project. According to the Office of Energy Development, there are zero counties that meet all of the categories required by the Indiana Code eight dash one dash four two. And the kicker is that there's zero dollars that have been allocated to fund this project if your county is considered to be solar-ready. So as some of our proponents for these industrial solar plants come in here and say we need to be, you know, get energy ready, just keep that in mind. Zero out of the ninety-two counties in the state of Indiana, um, are, have met that requirement from the state. The director of the MISO Grid spoke about the future of electrical production. Summing up his words, the future was not in solar or wind but in small modular nuclear reactors. Some of the reasons were because solar and wind are unreliable. This was from the director of the grid producer here in Indiana, not the PJM grid. Um, he also talked about in the Midwest, the electrical ramp is all occurring at the same time with the solar panels. Electricity has to be offloaded into the system as it's being produced. If the grid doesn't need the electricity, the energy must be stored until it can be offloaded. This is why the batter- battery energy storage systems or BSSs are needed with solar systems. He said that the best, a BSS, so the battery energy storage system, can only store the electrons for up to four hours. That was at best, okay? There've been numerous toxic fires from these batteries catching fire reported across our nation. Fire departments, especially ours here in Delaware County, is not equipped to put out these fires. So I do ask you that when you, um, revisit this ordinance, that we include some protection against, uh, the battery energy storage systems. That we also ensure that our solar systems, if they do get installed here in Delaware County, that they're being tested by an independent third party. And that we also are making for sure that these companies are aging out, um, the premium or aging out components that are broken. The financial impact from decreased property values, less agricultural production and tax abatements will also have a negative impact on our county. And what happens when the federal subsidies run out? What happens when these private companies sell to a public regulated utility company? There will be no protection for us private landowners, especially those of us that are in direct line to substations. I'm asking you to extend this solar moratorium, which you already have done, and I thank you for that, and create a stronger ordinance to protect all of our non-participants. Create a separate ordinance against battery energy storage systems, carbon sequestrations and data centers. All three of you, I do hope that you have been actively involved in Senate Bill four twenty-five and House Bill sixteen twenty-eight. Also citing what Mr. Cleveland was saying, we need to keep home role here in Indiana. We need to be the ones that are creating our ordinances for our local, um, community. So I just ask that all of us be good stewards of the land. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next is Tim Carter.
Morning, my name's Tim Carter. I live on North County Road twenty-five west. I will be significantly impacted by the bleach and solar farm. Uh, myself and a neighbor met with the representative of the, uh, National Grid Renewables, the solar project at my home. Uh, both of us were very disappointed in the lack of detail and information that was provided to us. Uh, we felt like they were mostly interested in trying to convince us how this was great for the community, uh, but wanted us to take a couple thousand dollars to compensate us fair troubles. Uh, they gave us no information or assurances about how my family would be protected from any negative impacts or aspects of this project. He simply dismissed my concerns and said he didn't know anything about my concerns when I asked. Since I am somewhat informed, I felt like I was not being, uh, or it was not being represented, uh, very accurately. Uh, as such, uh, I feel that it is imperative that our community gets all the details about this project and make sure that our community and its residents are protected. Uh, until a, a comprehensive ordinance is, uh, created, um, I appreciate the extension of the, uh, solar moratorium. I think that, uh, we all feel that complete transparency is best for all parties. Uh, the impacts of this project should be clear, understood before any decisions are made. If you, as the county commissioners, feel that some families have to suffer for the benefits of the community, those that will suffer should be fully aware of what will happen and what they will or will not be compensated for. Those of us that live next to the proposed project are deeply concerned and are relying on you as our elected leaders to make sure that your constituents are well represented. All you can imagine, I'm not overly supportive of this solar farm. I am just asking that you please make sure that there's transparency, representation and accountability during this process. Right now that we are all feeling that this, uh, solar farm, uh, companies are just planning on overpowering us and taking advantage of us and in our government system. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Next is, uh, Janet from Delaware.
Uh, good morning, members of the board and honorable county commissioners. My name is Janet Vernon and I'm a rural resident of Delaware County. I wanna thank you for extending the moratorium on solar. I believe it's important for our county to not be rushed so that we can ensure that we covered every topic and done the proper research. If we do not go under a moratorium, we would be vulnerable to solar applications that would take advantage of our county under a weak and insufficient ordinance. This is exactly what happened in Madison County and they've been in constant litigation for six years. Also, I would ask that all of you, all of you in this room, call and email the House Committee members on HB sixteen twenty-eight. Again, that's HB sixteen twenty-eight. This is a bill that attempts to take away local control of wind and solar projects. All of our hard work to draft and adopt proper ordinance will be for naught if the state forces these projects on counties. Thank you so much for your time and for listening to the concerns of many constituents in this county.
Thank you, thank you. Next is Billbury, Muncie. Billbury from Muncie. Next is, uh, Robert out there. Robert Coaster.
My name is Bob Tester. I, uh, I live at twenty-seven oh nine West Cornell Drive, uh, in Muncie, Indiana. I would point out, uh, four things, um. It seems that, uh, given the fact that this has been under so many years in development, the existing ordinance that was tabled or put into a moratorium, a lot of time and some further more meetings went into that. That was a, uh, a best exercise of our democratic process and the inclusion of input from people around the country, uh, the county. The introduction of a new moratorium is a second wave of action which seems inappropriate because of the way it's been set up. I would recommend that the ordinance that was under the current moratorium be allowed to go into effect and that these additional ideas and concerns that people bring up today and have been, uh, put forward be addressed in a subsequent, uh, working group, uh, that advises, uh, uh, county commissioners. I think it's important to, um, introduce new ideas in a systematic way. So, uh, let the existing moratorium expire. Move forward with the ordinance as it had been developed after several years of work. Bring together appropriate new task force to address some of the finer-grain points that have been raised today. And don't let perfectioning get in the way of progress. Achieving a good performing operating system in Delaware County is doable. And some of the issues that were mentioned in previous conversations from speakers are easily dealt, uh, dealt with. And, but if we stay in the zone of good, bad, right, wrong, we won't be making any progress. And, uh, we're gonna miss our opportunity as a county to increase our tax base, harvest, uh, free energy and enable farmers to self-identify and control the use of their land. I would not support the statewide bill that was mentioned, but I would support enabling folks in the Delaware County area, particularly the farmers, to do what they think is best for their own families and their own income. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Brittany Mock.
Hello, Brittany Mock, one-six-six-seven-zero, North County Road six hundred west, Gaston, Indiana. Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you for taking the time and doing some research and looking into the moratorium and deciding to put that on hold until we can get it um the ordinance where we need to be. Um, I want to remind you guys, we're involved with the Metaforge project. Our house will be encircled on all three sides, and that um it really puts stress on me, I guess, because I know that's going to change our way of life, and we have put all of our life savings into our property to stay there because obviously we farm and we raise show pigs and things, so it's not going to be just a house that we would have to replace and move because that's not an option for us. Um, I do want to remind you guys that, you know, um, I spoke with Invenergy when they were here. I had them come out to our house, and met with them. They tried to, you know, paint a pretty picture of how they were going to have trees and grasses and bees and things like that, but then when I asked them questions about things, how they were going to help be a good neighbor, as they want to claim that they are, they had nothing to offer. And since then, I've yet to see from anyone, talk to anyone. Um, I think you guys asked them to be present and transparent in the county, and I haven't seen any of that as far as any more meetings. The meeting that we did go to, they were trying to disclose things and didn't want to share, really talk to anyone about anything. So I think we need to keep that in mind if we're going to open them up to our county, that we need to make sure that they are indeed wanting to be good neighbors. They're just not here to take us over and, you know, move in and then move out and then not be seen or heard after that. So um I want to thank you guys again for um doing the moratorium and extending that, and just keep in mind that, you know, we need to make sure that we are making an ordinance so it protects everyone, not just the people that are benefiting from putting in the solar.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Jonathan Myers.
Yeah, my name's Dr. Jonathan Munro, and thank you again, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak as a physician who cares your constituents. Now, at our last meeting, I discussed air pollution and the one hundred thousand excess deaths it causes in this country annually. Air pollution kills more of your constituents than gun deaths and motor vehicle accidents combined. Half of these premature deaths result from the burning of fuels, with electricity generation being a major source of this pollution. These are known hazards, okay? Real known hazards documented, people are dying from them. But how can air pollution cause so many premature deaths, you might ask? Let's focus on just one of these pollutants from combustion, fine particulate matter, particles smaller than two-point-five microns. That means they're small enough to get passed through longer fences into a bloodstream. Once there, they can construct blood vessels. They cause inflammation. They promote clotting. That's why even short-term exposure to fine particulate matter increases your risk of stroke and heart attack. Long-term, these particles promote atherosclerosis, which is a fancy name for saying blockages, blockages of coronary vessels that require stenting or coronary artery bypass grafts. Now, I haven't even mentioned today lung disease or other pollutants. I've just focused on one pollutant, okay? But why should these health effects be surprising? If we poisoned the river with coal ash, it would seem intuitive that fish would be poisoned. They're swimming in the river after all, just like we are breathing the air after all, and it gets into our bloodstream. None of us have a choice over the air we breathe, but Commissioners, you actually can improve air quality, your constituents, by letting work on clean energy projects begin, just like elected leaders before you chose to set speed limits on our roads, or to mandate seat belts, or to remove lead from painting gasoline. Some of these were controversial decisions at that at the time, but controversy died away as lives were saved. But I'm wondering, you know, given all the benefits we hear about and all the dangers from generating electricity from fossil fuels, which are as serious as a heart attack, I'm wondering, like, why do these clean energy projects get a higher level of scrutiny than any other project? You know, we're to believe that if a small nuclear reactor was being put in someone's backyard, they wouldn't care. I mean, why is solar attracting a higher level of scrutiny than seemingly any other project? It doesn't make sense to me. I'm yet to hear one community-based argument beyond individual preference, and I think that the community deserves some explanation because, you know, their health, amongst other things, is on the line here um with efforts to basically block utilities solar and make it more viable. I think the community deserves a transparent explanation as to how their interests as a community are served by that. Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Autumn Grismore.
Um, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Autumn Grismore. I live at twenty-one thirty West Pineview Drive. I live in Creekwood um near the proposed uh Boyerton Project. It will actually run kind of around our neighborhood. Um, I just want to say thank you for extending the moratorium. I do believe this is an opportunity to be sure that the ordinance that we have in place does protect the health, safety, and welfare of our community as a whole. Um, I'm not saying that the ordinance that's on file um isn't, isn't, I don't know what to say good, isn't something that should be on file, but I believe there is enough new information since that was adopted that we do need to take another look at it. There's new information coming out about industrial solar all the time, and um it's imperative as a community that this stays fluid, that we're continuing to see the effects of industrial solar on our community. Um, and I just want to say thank you, and we are looking forward to helping in any way that we can, and um just thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joe Russell.
I'm Joe Russell. I live at three-five-zero-one East seven-hundred North E2. I think Yogi Berra said it's deja vu all over again. For four years, we've been talking about this. And we, and the proponents don't really say anything to convince the opponents. The opponents don't convince the proponents. We're just kind of stuck in uh like the movie Groundhog Day. Everyone in these meetings is kind of the same. Looking back in this century, we've had several projects, uh, the Peaking Power Plant near DeSoto, the Ag Park Ethanol, Taples, Wind and Solar. All of those projects had the ability to pack the room with people saying, no, 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 or if you say yes, yes, yeah. But we have none of those in our county. All five of those projects have been built in surrounding counties, and none of the doomsday stuff has come, come to uh being. So we, we tend to be um kind of labeled as an NIMBY capital of certainly east central Indiana, if not Indiana. When solar companies started looking at maps, Muncie, known for its manufacturing uh base in the past, when that left, they, the infrastructure still had substations and transmission lines, very attractive to solar, that's why they're here. Martha got busy uh because the plan commission didn't address it, put together a, an ordinance, which I think was some of her finest work, and it passed by commission, the board of commissioners, uh, without opposition, until a map, until maps are appearing that says it's going to be here, something's going to be there, and that's when the opposition seems to come alive. So I guess uh going forward, uh, I'd like to thank you to have the um faith in the plan commission to stick by their current uh rules and then modify and we've had more tournaments. At some point, we need to move forward. We're at a fork in the road. One leads to uh prosperity and, and it's good long-term for the farms. The other leads to, I don't know, I, I sent all the commissioners a, a paper on um the new NIMBYism and what it's doing to not only Delaware County, but counties all over the state, the nation. So we, we're at that crossroad, and if we're going to progress, we need to go down that road, or if we're going to continue as that star, we need to, we, we need to just keep more terms and applying our language where I, I foresee a time coming when you're going to be sued either by the solar companies that have millions of dollars invested already trying to recover some of that, or you're going to be sued by the opposition that don't want it as neighbors. You know, that's your, that's your turn, Mr. Russell. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next is Ellen Knapp. Ellen from Pineview Drive in Muncie. Uh, Cheryl Swingly.
Hi, Cheryl Swingly from Muncie. Uh, Commissioners, did you know that Indiana is energy insecure? We use three times as much energy as we produce according to the U.S. Energy Information Administration, and Delaware County is energy insecure because we have prevented energy projects since before COVID. Your suggestions for another moratorium goes against common sense. For example, a separate ordinance can be written for battery storage projects. That doesn't need to hold up the current one. The solar ordinance can even be amended while it's in effect. You know, no law is sacred, and as we prevent energy projects in our county, we're missing out on their benefits that surrounding county governments and the residents are receiving. Let me share how such projec- projects have helped improve the lives of residents in Randolph County for, and for some reason, you refuse to go over there and talk to those people. They've been doing energy for ten years. They have a history. They can tell you the pros and cons. Uh, and the benefits. First, a Randolph County leader says the county estimates that twenty-four percent of its tax base will be supported by renewables with the completion of its last solar project in twenty-twenty-seven, which means lower property taxes for homeowners. In an email I recently received, Representative Jeff Thompson, the Republican who's the chairman of Indiana's House Ways and Means Committee, said when he heard of our county's resistance to energy projects, don't they understand what this means for your AV, your assessed value? We are on the uh state's watch list. Second, by twenty-twenty-seven, Randolph County landlords with energy projects on their front line can expect more than four hundred thousand dollars of monthly revenue to be distributed among them. I'm sure some of this money will be spent locally, and we all know how money spent locally contributes to the economic health of communities. The one energy company that has worked in Randolph County has been generous in setting up a community foundation and paying for a number of special activities, and there has been many more repair and replacement projects supported in Randolph County by energy dollars that I don't have time to list. If we should work with companies who want to build in Delaware County, what hidden financial benefits might these companies offer our county? Finally, I want to remind you of the twenty-twenty-two Together Delaware Muncie Report, which has one of your names on it. It says, "Support." This is for our future. Support and/or incentivize green energy production as a viable method to allow for farmland recuperation and long-term preservation. Please let the current ordinance go into effect. Let the solar companies build. Let Delaware County be open for business. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is uh, I think it's Ryan Richards. Ryan Richards, ten-one-nine-one West seven-hundred North Gaston. Not much of a public speaker, but I hear a lot, I hear a lot about later, you're a ten-generational farm, my son's a ten. I hear a lot about how it's going to help preserve the family farm. I really, I really don't see that because all I see is people getting money, taking money for it, and a couple guys around us that they're going, they're going to turn that, using that money, raise cash rents on us. Because you can already see what it's done to land value. It's all because of solar. I know that, that's why they're getting three, four times now, that they're getting turn acre land, and it's all from solar, because they think they can, I can buy this ground here, that guy's around us here, Grant County, buy ground. I know the guys have bought ground in Grant County. They're, they're signed up for solar. They're just using that money to go ahead and go over there, so therefore it's driving up ground for young, younger generations like my son to deal with buy ground because right now, you can't, I can't even afford to buy ground what it is now and do a cash flow act. So all, all comes down to, all it comes down to is green. Farmers have adapted over the years. Others have hard times. They don't need this money. It all comes down to green. They want, they want this so they can get more. You think it's gonna, farms are going to go out of business? They're going to go out of business because they can't afford to buy ground anymore. They can't afford, they got people that's in solar driving cash rents up. My younger son, once again, he won't be able to, it's going to be hard for, hard for him to get ground. They do not take thousands and thousands and thousands of acres. If we could have a chance to get it to build a farm, they could take it all that away or green energy bet. Half of these, more likely than not, red hell, it's how everything is processed, how everything is built, what things are mined, it causes more pollution than what that one panel, one solar thing is going to end up providing. And I'm going, more pollution making it than that thing's going to do to produce energy. They're inefficient. On cloudy day, you're not going to get that much sun out of them. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next is Alan, uh, thirty-four-one West County Road seven fifty north. It's Goble. Okay, Goble. Thank you. Yeah, that is Alan Goble, thirty-four-one West County Road seven fifty north, and as a county resident since nineteen eighty-three. Um, I want to thank you guys for extending the moratorium on industrial solar. I know this is an emotional issue for a lot of folks. Hopefully this gives time for you guys to be able to make what decisions you feel best for Delaware County and its citizens. Thank you again. Thank you. Thank you. Jason Denetti.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Jason Denetti, two-two-eight North Vine, Muncie, Indiana. Um, first, just a suggestion. Um, I applaud your efforts to improve transparency, um, but it's, it's extremely challenging to access documents on your website. Ordinances, resolutions, stuff that's been passed or it's even on the agenda, I would just recommend that an effort to improve transparency that we work on that. Um, you know, coming to an agenda today without knowing what the ordinance reads is, is challenging. Um, I would suggest maybe looking at City of Muncie's municipal code. Uh, their clerk's office does an incredible job of publishing the agenda and every resolution and ordinance that is to be considered in that meeting well ahead of time, as if the council members got it uh in advance. So just a suggestion there. Um, another, uh, just some comments uh related to uh the moratorium. I believe this is the fourth potential moratorium. Uh, I attend a lot of public meetings, uh, elected official meetings. Usually when a motion uh is uh approved and there's a second, there's time for discussion so public can comment before uh Commissioners and elected officials take a vote. Um, that's standard Robert rules of order, so something that you might want to consider for future readings after a motion's been approved, allow the community to actually comment in that moment. Um, I know that was just for introduction, um, but most uh other meetings I attend, that does happen, and it's, it's helpful for people to be able to comment in that moment when that specific resolution or ordinance is up for discussion. As far as moratoriums, if this is the fourth, it really makes us look unorganized. I was a member of the Delaware County Study Committee. I was a privilege to serve on that. I volunteered over a year of my time with the eight other members. Um, we extensively looked at everything that is being talked about. Um, we extensively looked at everything that is being talked about. We had companies present. We researched every county. Um, we spent a lot of time and effort, and you even paid a consultant to compile all the minutes and recordings that were taken, uh, during those, those long meetings. If we're going to even consider another moratorium and talking about more amendments, I would encourage you to reconvene the official study committee because it was apolitical, unbiased, and professional. There were three opponents, three proponents, and three neutral people that debated numerous hours on this topic. Now, I do agree, there is new information coming out every single day about all kinds of technology. I just think that when you put in another moratorium in with it being potentially the fourth, that you, you definitely are sending a message that Delaware County is not open for business. And I think that will hinder us in the future and affect our growth. Um, and when I say growth, I don't necessarily mean population.
Thank you. Thank you, Jesse. Thank you. Jerry Kurtley, I believe. We have another Chris Milbury. Chris Milbury. Um, Angie from Morton. For Angie. Oh, my goodness, sir. Please. Drag. Thank you. Thank you. Is Amy here? She passes. Steven Hines. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Steven Hines. I live at two seven six South Dakota Avenue, Muncie, Indiana. I might have seven acres out at the proposed ordnance project. Um, what I gave, just gave you is the digest for that House Bill sixteen twenty-eight. Um, I'm sure you guys have already seen it, but I just want to go to one thing. Uh, it's at the bottom, and I highlighted it for you guys. It, uh, reads, "With certain exceptions, requires ordinances, regulations, and statutes in effect at the time a permit is entered into to continue to apply unless the development is not completed within ten years." So my understanding of that reads that whatever is on the ordinance, whenever a permit is submitted, um, that's the rules that they, that the solar companies have to abide by. Um, so I am here today to ask for you guys to pass a strong ordinance, um, like the one that the Citizens Group, uh, gave to you guys. And, um, uh, and that's in regard to like the decommissioning, uh, part of the, uh, that ordinance. Um, because I think that that's, um, an important thing for our county, uh, to protect itself. I think that the wordage on that is very good. Um, one thing that I heard a few people bring up was, uh, that this will bring new tax revenues to our county. And my understanding is that we're at our max levy. And so I don't think that it's going to bring any money into our county from a tax standpoint. Um, the only thing it's going to benefit is the properties like mine. Um, if my property value goes down, then I just want to pay much in property taxes. So, um, I just wanted to bring that up. Um, and I'm glad to hear you guys bring up the best systems for the battery energy storage systems, um, as part of the ordinance. Um, and, uh, yeah, just thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Harold King.
Thank you for the time. Harold King, one eight three hundred, North eight fifty West, Gaston, Indiana. You know, three, four years ago, myself and most of the people in this room and in this county do absolutely nothing about solar and industrial solar. Uh, fortunately, in the last three and a half years, we've continued to learn, to research, visit, and most of us know a whole lot more now. I just saw a brief kind of across in the last day or so, in the Mojave Desert, big solar plant, industrial, after nine years, it's going to be decommissioned because it's not competitive. Uh, I want to address the fact that in the sole, industrial solar, a handful of people are financially rewarded quite handsomely. And I want to talk about the other ninety-nine percent of us that are affected and have no financial dog in the hunt. Mary McQuinton Play has the defining issue of research and appraisal on the impact of industrial solar on neighboring, uh, houses and land. That has stood the test in a couple of court cases. And the impact is from, of course, as close as you are to it, it decreases in the amount that you're affected up to three miles. That's a lot. I really enjoyed the guy from, uh, Farm Bureau because he talked about how their solar company made accommodations for all those people that were going to be affected. Most of the companies I've heard have never done that. So I would love to see a couple of things put into this ordinance to protect the rest of the people. One would be a good neighbor plan that does exactly what he was talking about. If, if you are next to that, you are compensated and it has to be done legally with signed letters by the solar company. One other thing that's not talked about much is that, you know, Gaston, Albany, Eden, small communities, there needs to be at least a minimum of a one-mile buffer around those city limits. If you need to expand, that's usually where it's going to happen. And if I want to have a couple of homes out there, I don't want to be right next to the solar. I appreciate all the research so many people are doing. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
Thank you. Okay, that's everybody that has signed up. Um, we'll go on to, uh, Commissioners' comments. Mr. Brand, you have a couple of things to work on?
Sure. So, uh, a little bit of a follow-up to some of the comments that were being made. There are some Senate bills and House bills that we need to pay attention to. Number one, Senate Bill number one, uh, talks very specifically about, uh, property tax relief. And this is the governor's plan. And anybody that watched the elections last year, every single person known for state or governor talked about some sort of property tax relief. And it looks to me like somehow somebody's going to get their way there. And to make a decision for businesses, abatements, things like that based on property tax, I think we can all anticipate that, you know, those property taxes aren't going to be in the future what they are today. So Senate Bill number one, um, we need to pay attention to that. Uh, House Bill sixteen twenty-eight came up a couple of times. I want to comment on that. While it does look to, um, infringe on the home rule powers of a county, it's very specifically about projects that are shared across county lines. So the reason the state's looking at this is because traditionally counties don't work and play well together. So they believe it's in our best interest for them to make these decisions at the state level, and I don't agree with that. So I would rather the, each county be able to make its own decision. So sixteen twenty-eight is specifically about counties where, uh, where the projects are going across state lines. Uh, the one that you need to pay attention to is Senate Bill four twenty-five. That one very specifically goes after the home rule powers, uh, at, in the construction of electric generation facilities. Um, I still believe those decisions need to be made at the local level. And the power, the home rule power of the county commissioners should not be, uh, be challenged like that. So, um, I've got two other things. They're actually on the agenda. Ones, the thirty-two and a half hour work week, I brought this up, I believe, in the January sixth meeting. Um, you know, everything I just said about property taxes, there's no doubt that our revenue, uh, coming into our county is going to be less in a couple of years than what it is today. And we need to get ahead of that. I would rather not stick our heads in the sand and be proactive and try to come up with some common sense ways to approach that. I am not in favor of terminating any employees just because, uh, you know, the thirty-two and a half hour rule. But there are some strategies we can put in place to make that common sense and get ahead of it. So I'm proposing, uh, a committee, a little study committee or focus group, maybe is a better word, for the elected officials that have employees in their departments that have thirty-two and a half hour work weeks as well as department heads. And we'll get together and we'll put a plan in place with timing so we can get ahead of this. Because I can vision a future state where the county council, their job is to balance our budget. And they're going to look at revenue and expense. And if we don't have the revenue to cover expense, the county council could say, I'm making it up. You, you have to cut fifty heads. Now we're in reaction. We need to be proactive. We need to go after this. So, um, I'm proposing a focus group there. And I will, uh, champion that and I'll work with, uh, all the departments, uh, to do that. And the last thing is county take-home vehicles. I'd like to, uh, I'm going to put together a proposal with some feedback that's been coming from some of the departments, uh, for the, uh, for the Commissioners to consider on eligibility for take-home vehicles. There's currently not an eligibility criteria in our handbook, and I believe that there should be. Um, you know, something to the effect that, uh, there's regular travel outside normal business hours. Uh, obviously, emergency responders, the Sheriff's Department, nine-one-one EMS, EMA, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the other departments that may get called out once a month. Um, in my opinion, that doesn't make you eligible for a take-home vehicle. So I'm going to put together a proposal for consideration, uh, by the Commissioners. So thank you, President Henry, for allowing me to time a comment.
Like, I'm not on the agenda here, excuse me, but you do bring up some good study focus groups. And I have been around here, now I hate to say it, but a few years, I've worked here seventeen years, left, back. So I'm starting my thirteenth year. And for about twelve and a half years, I've been saying that we need to adjust our part-time people because as more of us are aging and we like maybe have a little pocket money. And you cannot convince me that we could not find some part-time people to come in and do some of these jobs, three days a week, at maybe eighteen dollars an hour, let's just say. So put that on your focus group, because I think they don't need the benefits. And they know what they're doing, but they just need a little pocket money and they would like to have a part-time job.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next Commissioner meeting will be Tuesday, February eighteenth at nine AM in this room. Um, I will entertain a motion for recess. Second, a motion to recess on a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Regan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for the recess. Thank you.